Good evening, everybody. I call this regular meeting of the Uvalde Consolidated Independent School District Board of Trustees to order that the record show that a forum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. If you will please rise and join me and bow your head for a moment of silence for 21 seconds to honor our 21 beautiful souls. Thank you. Next, I will introduce our cadets for tonight. This evening, we have first, we have Cadet Seaman Apprentice Joaquin Slesiger is a first-year cadet from Morales Junior High. Cadet Slesiger's awards consist of a participation award, academic team award for participating in the national academic exam, and orienteering award where he was half, where he was half of the eighth grade team that placed second at the San Benito Orienting Classic. Cadet Slesiger has already proven himself as a vital asset to our program, and we look forward to seeing what he accomplishes next. Second, we have Cadet Seaman Apprentice McKenzie Wood is also a first-year cadet in her ninth-grade year of high school. Cadet Woods' award consists of two participation awards, a community service award, a physical fitness award, and academic team award where she also completed the national academic exam, and a drill team award she earned while competing at the Sea Dragon Drill meet at Southwest High School. Cadet Wood has the largest can-do attitude and never says no. Both of these, both this cadet as well are going to be key ingredient to the success of NJRTC program. Lastly, we have Cadet Seaman Apprentice Cristiano Gonzalez. Cristiano is an eighth-grade cadet from Morales Junior High School as well. He has been awarded the community service and participation awards. He was also hand-selected to receive the Outstanding Inspection Ready Circle 10 Award during this year's annual military inspection. We will have now our invocation, our invocation to be led by Travis Johnson, the Director of Youth Ministries at First United Methodist Church.
Good evening. Lord, we thank you for the men and women in this room, Father, the men and women of our school board, their willingness to serve their community. Lord, you have made it known in your word that your heart is for children. Lord, and so I pray for this body just wisdom as they make decisions for the school district, God, and for a continued peace and healing in our community. Lord, we love you. God, you are so good, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance of the United States and the state of Texas that will be led by our cadets. Thank you. You may be seated. Moving on to item number two, we have open forum. Open forum, we have two speakers tonight. We'll start with the first one is Diana Caru.
Good evening, school board members, Mr. Patterson and guest. Diana Olbado Caru, City of Uvalde resident, Uvalde County, as well as the Uvalde School District. I come before the board this evening to express some thoughts and concerns about the selection of the site for the new school. I'm not opposed to the new school. I think from the architectural drawings that are presented here tonight, it's going to be an amazing facility, a great asset to our community and to our students, and sorely needed. Obviously, our buildings are quite old. It's unfortunate that it took a tragedy to get us to the place where a new school will be built. I understand, and these are not things, obviously, that I can say definitively, that I know are facts, but it appears that the selection of the site was made because of the fact that the land was donated by the Cap family. I don't know if that was the driving force behind the selection of the site, but personally, I don't believe it was the best site for the, for the school. If you look at communities around Uvalde County, most schools, new schools are built on the outskirts of the city where there's more open spaces, less traffic congestion, and those kinds of things. So I find it really hard to understand why the decision was made for that particular site, given the fact that it's already a very difficult area for traffic, for students, for parents. I understand that, obviously, you're going to have to build roads, put in infrastructure, and even if the land was donated to the school, which the Cap family will receive a significant tax break on that donation, they'll also be able to develop additional properties. They own most of the land in that area. I also understand that the district is going to be purchasing 12 homes on seven point some odd acres that also belong to the Cap family. I did some research. I know that the land is appraised at approximately $1 million, which is what the school is going to pay for it. Tenure period, 5% interest with First State Bank. I'm not quite sure how that purchase is going to benefit the district, the community. I don't know how that's all going to be decided, but it just seems very concerning to me as a community member and taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Going on to number two, Mr. David Binkie.
Thank you for the opportunity to share some thoughts.
Yes, sir.
One is policy and procedure. Before the shooting, after the shooting, how many times should I mention it? Did you follow policy procedure? According to the Texas House and just to report, there is a big question. But let's bring it forward to 2023. Last week, there's a DPS trooper that physically grabbed a parent, and it doesn't matter what parent it was, it's a parent, and threatened with the rest. What is the policy and procedure for that? Why is a DPS trooper being the first point of contact with a parent? Why is that? Shouldn't it be an educator, a counselor, a principal? Why is, through that entire video, if you watched it, we have a DPS trooper running up and down checking doors? Is that what they're there for? I thought they were there for security. In addition to that, according to the report, they were calling for UCISD police. I don't, I know they're still rebuilding, but I think we look at it through the lens of policy and procedure. Where is your policy procedure for DPS troopers on campus? Are they going to be the first contact for parents that, okay, maybe they used the wrong door? Maybe they didn't follow their procedure. Parents don't know it because they don't do it all the time. What's the policy procedure? Because regardless of what happened, boy, the optics were bad. That's part one. Part two, you know, Rob and Rob Elementary and Dalton Elementary, I think, if I had my research correctly, they were both built together, 1954. And, you know, we had a presentation that the new school, which looks incredible, is going to be built on the north side. So I ask, when was the last time a board member or superintendent, anybody in administration walked down East Evergreen or East Cargill or South Camp? Or do you know, even know where it is? It's on the southeast side. Because if you go there and look right free, Rob, how are those students going to walk across that busy highway to the Rob campus? Kids running across to avoid trucks is what I'm hearing from those residents. So how are they going to get up to the new camps? Are there sidewalks on the south side? No. I can walk on a sidewalk to every campus on the north side. So what's the access going to be? Where are the buses? Because when they did the presentation, there was a little line there that said, hey, may leave a hole in the Rob community. It leaves bigger than a hole, gentlemen. And the act of putting it on the north side, leaving the south side void of zero, is that discriminatory? Is that something that DOJ or OCR or TA needs to look at? Yeah, we're to build, yeah, it looks great. Plans being donated. But is, is the fact how you're relocating the school, given the current divide and the historical divide? Because if you look at the language of the original lawsuit, just because it stopped, you know, after 47 years, doesn't mean the dynamics of discrimination stopped. Take a good look, please.
Appreciate it. Okay, that is all that we have for tonight. So moving on to item number three, Superintendent's Report, 3A, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President, trustees. Tonight, our superintendent's report, first item is just to bring your attention to future meetings. Of course, you realize, of course, you realize this is a very busy time of year with all the end-of-year activities. So Mika will be sending you reminders, but May 2nd, we have our Dinner and Staff Awards, and then May 8th, we have our Student and Employee Recognitions Awards, and then May 15th, we'll circle back to our regular board meeting in May. And also, there's other banquets and activities, end-of-year award ceremonies that we will be sending you reminders about as well. So next, trustees, is the school naming process. This is for information only, of course. These are not voting items. I sent you some criteria for consideration. Our current policy does not have a process for the naming of facilities. It's been a long time since you've named a, named a new school. And so it's time to begin to think about what we want the process to look like. So we've pulled some examples from around the state for your consideration, and we can discuss that in the near future when you've had some time to review. There's many different ways that school districts go about forming committees, and so we will find something to be able to recommend to you that you'll be, of course, that you can be satisfied with. But before too long, it'll be time to start thinking about that process. Also, on April 25th next week, want to remind you that our district is hosting a Tazby Spring Workshop in the cafeteria, and I believe that's at 5:30. Mika, is that right? Okay, thank you. So I believe some, some of our board has signed up for that. It's a regional workshop, and some of our local, local districts will be joining us there as well. And trustees, sometimes we get, we've been very busy, of course, and sometimes we get lost in some of the extra issues and forget to, to recognize the most important reason we're here, and I'm guilty of that this month. But we've had just a historic year for Uvalde, just incredible successes. And I will see some of those as we recognize them a little bit later in the year. But I just want to run down real quick some of the, just the fantastic program and program recognitions that we've had in the last 60 to 90 days. Most recently, our Uvalde High School Illusions Indoor Guard and Drumline are the Texas Educational Color Guard Association, T E C A, percussion and winds champions. They performed a program entitled My House and were state champions with that entry. Our FFA Cotton Team, state quali, they qualified for state competition. Our high school FFA barbecue team qualified for the state cook-off. May 5th, I can attest to how good they were because I was asked to judge. That was a, they, they competed against teams in the region, just outstanding and a lot of fun. Those kids are having a lot of fun with the barbecue teams. Kylie Reed got a full ride scholarship to UTSA. The Terry Scholarship was very outstanding scholarship because it also pays for things like housing and meals where most scholarships do not. So also, our, as you know, our Mariachi team were UIL's state, state champions and sweepstakes winners. Our UIL Concert and Sight Reading Sweepstakes winners were a high school wind ensemble, our high school symphonic band, and our high school choir. So just about our entire fine arts department were sweepstakes winners and sweepstakes, just to remind the audience, that's the highest award that our fine arts programs can get. And so just outstanding work by those students and the directors and the support teams and the parents. We had a BPA National Qualifier. She will be going to Anaheim and to compete. Just, I think that's just coming up. We have state qualifiers in the solo and ensemble contest for both individually, for both band and choir. Our UIL Young Filmmakers Festival, we had a state winner. We had a state qualifier in the Texas High School Visual Arts Event. We had swimming and diving state qualifiers, wrestling state champion, powerlifting went to state, cosmetology went to state, cross-country went to state, and recently, three basketball athletes were named to the Texas Associated Basketball Coaches Association Academic All-State Team, which is a real honor. So we are trying to feature these groups as we do our weekly video. They're keeping us hopping because there's so many groups we need to get around and recognize. And it's been a lot of fun talking and getting to know these students and listening to their success story. So I just want to remind you, it has been, and, and we've got a ways to go. So it's been a really, really good year in being able to recognize students for their successes. I want to take a moment to recognize our new officer. This is Eric Castillo. Eric comes to us right out of the Police Academy here at the Junior College where his peers elected him president of his class. He lives here in Uvalde and has jumped right in, spending most of his time at the high school, and received a report that he was on Saturday teaching a student how to change a flat out in the parking lot. So that's pretty good. So Officer Castillo, welcome to the team. We're very glad to have you. Also, would like the, the board to, to know that we spoke to the high school. Mr. Harrison, I spoke to the high school leadership team, student leadership group after the walkout a couple of weeks ago, just to listen to them and get their thoughts. In our discussion, it came up that they wanted to do something very positive from the students at UHS. So at some point, we're working on a date before our one-year date. We're going to, from the administration, support the high school leadership in sponsoring a day of celebration of remembrance and life. There will be a few things that, that they want to do in the days and weeks leading up to the one-year date to celebrate each of the lives lost in those days, and then have a day at the Honey Bowl where the high school students will sponsor, work out some fun events in a day of remembrance. They would like for us, they're, like our help to bus in elementary students on a schedule, an hour, hour and a half schedule throughout the day where they can intermingle and, and get to know the elementary students a little better. Their, their comments were, when we were that age, we looked up to our high school students a lot, and we want to do something for them. They also have some ideas for supporting our teachers at the end of the year, and it was just very encouraging and uplifting to hear these students and how they wanted to do something special, do something positive, and support our children, our children lost, and their teachers. So we're really proud of them, and we can, we'll have some more information coming out as we get closer to that date and selected date on that. So, Mr. President, I believe that's all of my reports for this evening.
Thanks. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to item number four, consent agenda. For A, minutes of the special meeting of the Board of Trustees held on March 27, 2023. B, minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held on March 27, 2023. C, item information regarding maintenance and operations. D, item information regarding transportation. E, item information regarding SFE. F, item information on the district's investment activity for March 2023. G, item information on the district's credit card activity for March 2023. H, item information for revenues and expenditures as of March 2023. I, item of information on the tax collection activity for March 2023. J, item information for the district's federal program activity for March 2023. K, item information on vendor update for current school year. And L, item information on student attendance, and M, information on student discipline. Does any board member wish to pull any item from consent agenda? Here, none, entertain a motion?
Mr. President, I, I move that we approve the consent agendas presented.
Got a motion, myself, Javier Flores, second of Mr. Suarez. Any further discussion? Seeing here and none in favor, motion passes unanimously with Ms. Laura Perez and Mr. Cal Lambert, absent today. Moving on to five, items of Division Administration and Operations. Five A, presentation of new elementary school long-range facility plan. Mr. Patterson.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Texas Commission of Education has adopted rules that require independent school districts to develop long-range facility plans for campus proposed to undergo major renovation, minor renovations, or a new construction project, which is what we have here. This document must be presented to the Board of Trustees and updated as required in the rules, and a long-range facility plan shall be created for each facility. So tonight, here on this item and item 5B, we have our, what we consider to be our rock star group here from Huckabee and, and from our CAC. We, we can't say enough about your time and commitment to this project and the months of work that you have, and what a fantastic project and event and school this is going to be. So Carrie, you're going to have to help me with a little bit on what we need to do on, on the, on the long-range plan.
I will do that. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Patterson. I'm here to present the long-range facilities plan for the new elementary school. And as in previous presentations, I will, in theory, walk you through. There we go. The two components. So the first is the required actions and operations, the involvement of the board that are required in the new facility standards. And the second are the components of the long-range facility plan itself. All right. So as we've talked about in previous presentations, there are five different reasons that a board might be involved in school facility standard-related work. The first is connected to designation of which rules. Because the events needing and necessitating a new elementary school occurred after November 1st of 2021, this campus will be required to comply with the new rules. The second is the adoption of an educational specification, which y'all did in October of 2022. The third is the presentation of a long-range facility plan, which we will do tonight. The fourth is a method of compliance for the campus, which y'all did in November of 2022, and designated the quantitative method. And the last is adopted, adoption of innovative policies if a qualitative method is pursued, which y'all did not. So looking at the components of the long-range facility plan itself, this is language straight from the administrative code, which, which include the requirements of a long-range facility plan. So here are three of those components, looking at instructional programs, both general programs, special education programs, partnerships, looking at the agent condition of existing buildings and systems for an existing campus, history of completed capital improvement projects, again, for a renovation-type project. And then here are the other four. So side evaluation of the, the project, the project campus, your educational specification, which becomes included in the long-range facility plan by incorporation. So the document that y'all adopted in October will get inserted into this document so that it becomes one complete document. The school district's enrollment projections, maximum enrollment and maximum capacity of the facility, and any non-compliance, partial or full compliance of the safety and security requirements that are now required in subsection K of the new rules. So the process of developing the document shall include inputs. And naturally, with the CAC and with the charrette process with the students and stakeholder engagement, we have had great stakeholder feedback on all the components for the project. And then it must be updated, which we will do prior to commencement of construction, to include the access control document that's required in the, in the rules. There's a cross-reference in the rules that require, once the project has gotten to a certain point in design, there's enough information that's been solidified related to access control that that document can be finished and then put into the long-range facility plan. So we will update the document as needed to comply with that provision, and that will happen in the next month. This requirement is met when the long-range facility plan has been completed. It's been presented to the board, which we are doing tonight, and then turned over to the prime design professional, which in this case would be Huckabee. And then it expires after five years. And so at that point, or if a capital improvement project is pursued outside that five-year window of tonight's date, because the presentation is occurring at this regularly scheduled board meeting, then the, the document would need to be updated to comply with the rules requirement for a long-range facility plan. And the last piece is to show you what the document looks like. You have a copy in front of you. It's a, you know, three pages of content. Naturally, this is a lean document at this point. This is a new construction project. So existing capital improvements, that kind of history or existing buildings and systems don't apply to this, and a non-compliance or a partial compliance with the facility standards would not apply in this case. All of those provisions will be complied with when the project is complete. But over the course of this building, this document will need to be updated as the district does pursue capital improvement projects in the future. So the template has been set up for this document to be amended as necessary in the future. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Carrie, we don't need any action at this time, then.
Action is not required for the long-range facility plan.
This has, this has to be done whether we want to or not.
Correct.
Any questions? I think you're up for, for 5B, right? Okay, I think you're up for, for a five B, right? If I can begin or is it another one? Consider approval of schematic design for new elementary school. Thank you, Carrie.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Natalie Arias and I am one of the co-chairs for the Community Advisory Committee, um, for the new elementary school design, and we're going to present, uh, the schematic design to you all tonight. We'll start off with, uh, those that'll be speaking tonight. We've got Tim Miller here from the UCISD Moving Forward Foundation. He is the Executive Director. We have Lalo Diaz, who is my co-chair, uh, for this committee. Myself, Natalie Arias, Jeff Rodriguez, he is the principal from Huckabee, and then Carrie Brady. She's the Vice President of Educational Practice from Huckabee, and Huckabee is the architectural firm that we are working with on this project. So for tonight, you're going to get, um, some of this will be the, has been covered previously at other meetings, so some of it will seem repetitive. But just to remind everybody, um, we'll review the Moving Forward Foundation, uh, the Community Advisory Committee and the process, the conceptual and schematic design, and then talk about next steps.
I'm Tim Miller. I'm the Executive Director of the Uvalde C I S D Moving Forward Foundation. Uh, the foundation was set up about a month after the shooting. Uh, and the purpose of the foundation is to collect the funds and then build, build the school to replace the one that you won't be using at Robb Elementary. Um, the board members are on the screen right here. A few of them you may recognize, Mr. Patterson.
Not from that bitch.
And then also Mickey Gertis is a Uvalian. Uh, and we also just recently added Amanda Hughes. She's a nineteen ninety-seven graduate from Uvalde High School. Uh, with family, we've been in Uvalde for many years. So we've got several Uvalians on the board, uh, to help out with guiding our work. Uh, I do want to, Huckabee, of course, is one of our essential partners. Uh, they were chosen to be the, uh, architect to design the school. But we also have a very, another very important partner in Juris Contractors out of San Antonio. They'll be building the school. Um, HEB Grocery, uh, provided, uh, three of the ten million dollars, which was the starting gift. And then Charles Butt, uh, and several of the Butt family members also, uh, provided the remaining seven million. So we're very appreciative of Huckabee and Juris waiving the fees that they would normally charge to design and build the school. And, uh, the monetary gift from HEB and from the Charles Butt family. Um, the reason, as you are familiar with, uh, we set the foundation up so that we could, uh, build a school uh, on a faster pace than y'all could have done if you had go out for a bond election and gone through that process. So that was the primary reason. And we, we want to make sure that we got students and teachers and other, uh, folks into a school, uh, a lot sooner rather than later. Um, we are looking at raising sixty million dollars. That is for the school itself as well as, uh, on the site plan, you see a, a number of improvements to both the Dalton side as well as what needs to be done at the new elementary school site to help out with existing traffic issues with Dalton, as well as making sure that you've got, um, a very nice school that will last for ninety-plus years. Uh, we've still got several fundraising events coming up within the next couple of months. And you'll probably possibly being seeing a lot more media attention, uh, to our work because we still have fifty million dollars to raise as well as about seven million dollars in in-kind donations. And so we'll be pushing out a lot of, uh, information regarding the ability for folks to be a part of the foundation and through those type of things.
Okay, we are gonna review quickly, um, the committee process, what that's been like. So as you've heard, or you know, uh, the foundation was created after the regular board meeting on August fifteenth. And we were assigned the charge of guiding the design work for this project. Um, this is kind of an overview of our charge, but we really, um, had, it was very specific. It was to, again, guide the work for the design. Um, prioritizing, uh, the safety and security of the students, of course, and teachers, academic programs, instructional delivery and outdoor learning. And of course, help, of course, health and wellness as well. Um, but really just trying to meet the needs of our students. And like Tim said, we wanted to build a school that was not only beautiful, but that would last, and that would be something that our community could be proud of. We also, of course, um, reviewed the district's mission, beliefs and objectives through all of this work to make sure that we were aligning our work with your goals. This is a list of the committee members. Um, so we have a variety of stakeholders represented here, um, some dual roles. Um, but we had a lot of input from this committee and, uh, it was a very, uh, long process. As you can see, we've been meeting since September. Um, we've had regular meetings. There was a charrette which involved rotations of different groups of stakeholders, including food service, um, transportation, local law enforcement, emergency services, and even a group of students, teachers, administrators, to try to get some of that input about what this school really needed to have. Um, and then we had our last, most recent, I don't mean last ever, but our most recent committee meeting was on March twenty ninth. Um, and then we had our community presentations last week where we presented what we're presenting to you tonight to our community and invited everybody to come and see that.
Before we jump into the schematic design, um, portion of the presentation, we wanted to start back with how the foundation and groundwork were laid in the conversations that we had with the CAC. Uh, there were three driving topics that, that drove the work. The first is brain research. The second is five phases of emergency management. We know that as school safety and security and trauma-informed care. As it relates to brain research, we wanted to make sure that we're providing a variety of settings for students to do their learning because that is the way that we maximize their learning and the time they're spent, that they spend in this building. And so here's a list of the ways in which we designed the different spaces within the facility to be conducive to those varied settings. So you can see how some of them provide a wide variety of functionality and some are very specific. But we wanted to make sure that the entire campus provided those opportunities to them. The second is five phases of emergency management. We took a three-step approach to this work and we built that process with the district and with the CAC. And so we are nearing the end of step two. Um, we defined the, all of the threats, not just to the campus or the property, but even, um, contextual, um, issues that may come up like a gas pipeline in the area, the railroad, municipal airport, lots of different components to that conversation, very deep and very broad. And then we looked at recommendations for mitigation strategies for those highest threats, highest risk. Um, and worked through all of that and have incorporated that into the process and the design. And then the last would be the implementation of the solution and making sure that we coordinate that not only with the built environment of the facility, but also policies and procedures of the district as well as coordinating with outside agencies. Here are the exterior, some of the exterior safety and security measures that are a part of the design. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we provide information to y'all and the community, um, by way of transparency to, to help people understand what types of measures have been included in the design. Here are the, some of the interior measures that are included in that list, um, which we will always provide in text form. We will never present safety and security in graphic form. Um, and the and more at the bottom of that page is inclusive of some decisions that we're still working through the fine detailing with the district. Um, and there will naturally be some things that are included in the design that we will likely never talk about. Um, they will be coordinated with, uh, the district as, as needed. Um, but we want to, uh, balance transparency with confidentiality and be very delicate around this topic. The last is trauma-informed care. One of the, uh, activities that we did with the CAC and with the students during the charrette process was empathy mapping. So what you see in front of you are the results of that empathy mapping. Uh, the CAC broke down into four different smaller groups, one from the student perspective, one from educators, one from parents and family, and one from the greater community. And then students empathy mapped students. And so we were able to look at all that information and incorporate their feedback into the design. This is the inclusive design, uh, conversation that we had. All of these elements were included as required by the rules in the educational specifications that y'all adopted in October. And so these are all included in the design as well. And then lastly, in this area, we, in the background, incorporated in a toolkit that has recently been developed for trauma-informed design in a school setting. And so there are twelve domains, which you can see on the screen. And so we're working through all of that to make sure that we can achieve as much of the design elements as possible in those twelve domains, so that we can make sure that the design, um, is thoughtful as much as possible in this context. Here is the program of spaces of the major components included in the project. So you'll see the three different, um, grades served, twelve classrooms each. And some of those specialty instructional spaces, um, core spaces, special education environments, and some of the core components of the administration area. And here is the adjacencies, the major massing diagram that we provided during conceptual design, showing the overall layout and configuration of the facility. So you can see which components of the building are single-story and which components of the building are two-story and how those different functional areas relate to each other.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm here to present the exterior schematic design of the project. And so, um, I'd just like to start off by saying that the planning of this design for the new elementary school provides for a facility that can administer academic and educational, uh, relevance, safety and security, community engagement, um, in accordance with programmatic, programmatic requirements, um, of the district and T A standard guidelines. So for the site, um, we had some careful consideration and through this, um, process, um, for this project, we had a lot of input that came back. And so we had involvement from teachers, administrators, students, parents and committee members. And so for this design, um, there were two factors that we were looking at as we were developing this, this school. Uh, first one was, um, focused on the vibrant Hispanic culture elements that are known for Uvalde. Um, with the symbolism of strength, character and the identity of Uvalde. The other traits, um, these traits can be seen in the rich culture and colorful elements in the papel picado of project. And so, those items that, um, bring vibrant colors into the school. Um, the other part of the sign that we took into consideration was, um, the biophilic design centered on beautiful sunsets. The honeybees, the monarch butterfly migratory route that comes right through Uvalde, uh, the Frio River, and then the large beautiful trees that are in the middle of the streets. So here you see an image of an entry, the main entry of the campus, um, with, um, a covered area for buses to come up to the front, and this is the front entry for the campus. On these other images, um, you will see that, um, the, um, accent colors that from the outside as well as on the inside of the, of the campus, um, we have an enclosed courtyard here that, um, students can use for during, um, day activities to, um, to be in, into the school itself. Um, this project sits on about twenty-three acres. We are located adjacent to Dalton Elementary School with, um, the programmatic size is about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. Uh, we have three separate bus drives for this. Yeah, I skipped ahead one too many. Um, and so we've, um, we are adding two new streets, um, in this project on the site, uh, development as well. Um, as you can see here, we have, um, this project that, you know, stems off of Four Street and runs, um, west on the backside of Dalton. And then that street continues to be the entrance for the parent drop-off for the new elementary school. Along with that, we are, um, updating or including a road that would connect Leona and go north for emergency responders as well as the public to access the property. These are just some of the images of the exterior of the building along with the courtyard. On the exterior, we have, um, limestone that we are working with, regional, um, um, quarries to find, um, limestone that is, um, close to the area. We've also have a design, um, based on the Deheinous Brick with the orange. Um, we have that at the base of the building as well as other key elements, um, in the building design itself. Um, there are some metal panels that will give durable, long-lasting, um, um, exposure to the outside of the building in select locations. The other items that you'll notice here is that on the canopy there, the columns themselves, um, look like tree branches as well, and that's taken from the design of, or from the, um, trees that are in the camp, in the city. So for the interior schematic design, the, um, the papel picado transfers into, on the outside as well as the inside, as well as the biophilic design on the school. We've used vibrant colors in select locations, um, to pop within the, um, the building itself. Um, since Uvalde is known for the honey and the bees, um, we have a lot of the, um, imagery and the, um, um, images on, on the inside of the building as well. But the other thing we wanted to make sure was on the materials that we were selecting, they were durable and cleanable and could stand the test of time. So these are just some of the images. Um, on the upper left hand, that's the image of the entry, this, the secure vestibule as you come into the school. Um, on the upper right is the cafeteria and the platform or stage, if you will. The lower left is, um, the collaboration space on the fourth floor, um, wing and then fourth grade wing, and then the image to the bottom right is the learning or the stair with the learnings, the library with the learning stair. And on the interior, th- these were the elements that we were picking up on, um, um, on some of the designs because they're so beautiful on the sunsets that are here. You've got the, the rivers, um, the Frio River that's, um, adjacent to Uvalde here. The butterflies, as I mentioned, and the honeybees. All these are themes that we use, um, with pops of color within the campus. The entry.
While, while designing the school, I mean, there was a lot of thought into what we were gonna put into the school that represented Uvalde, right? So we come to the tree in the library area, what's actually in the, in the hallway between the library and the courtyard, which is gonna be accessible to, you know, visitors as they come into the school. And, uh, we wanted to, of course, put in a tree representing, of course, Tree City, who we were in Uvalde. Uh, the fact that, um, the oaks that we have in the middle of the tree represent a strong foundation for Uvalde, a strong, the strongest tree out there, right? And, uh, through that, we are also trying to find a way that we could, uh, honor the twenty-one victims that passed in the tragedy of May twenty-fourth. So, uh, we sat with them, a couple of meetings we had, we met with them probably back in February, March, we met with them again. Um, at every, whenever we presented the committee, we presented them privately. And we explained to them and we showed them what our idea was. So our idea came back as, uh, the tree that's gonna be placed, it's gonna have two large limbs representing the two teachers and nineteen smaller limbs representing the children. Uh, we, we visited with them. We told them that we're probably going to, uh, allow towards the bottom of the limbs a way for them to, for them to etch their names. You know, this is permanent. This is a steel structure. Etch their names on the bottom of, of, so that it can be seen from the bottom up. And, uh, we're also working with them to see if maybe they wanna add a private quote on the top, uh, something that is special to them. And, uh, so that's kind of where, what this represented. We wanted to, you know, we know that we, this school, we got it because of the tragedy that happened. And technically, this is gonna be the center focus of the school and the vision of what we're doing. And technically, this is holding up our school, right? This, this, this tree is gonna be there symbolizing, uh, the school for years to come. And, uh, like I said, it's, uh, we're still working towards the details. Uh, we've had some ideas on maybe adding some, uh, QR codes that we can, that can be scanned and that can then show a video or show a, the history of each children and, uh, their story. So again, we're still working through the details. We'll probably meet with the families again to, to get that correct. But it's been a, a very thoughtful process. We wanted to, to respect everybody's wishes and make sure that we did everything right. But we also built something that was going to, to, to honor them properly and also represent Uvalde.
Thank you. So I want to speak a little bit about the next steps for this project. So as Natalie and Carrie mentioned, we started back in August, September of last year. We've gone through, um, November for the conceptual design. It started with programming, planning, and then conceptual design. So we've been in the schematic design phase now since November up until April here. And so we are at that point, um, to go into the next phase of the work. And through, through this whole project, we've, um, And through through this whole project, we've we've met with the CAC. I think we're up to 10 meetings now. We've given several board updates as well. And community presentations as well to understand project and how it's developed. The next few steps is a construction document phase, and then that leads into construction. So a few beats here. So today we're asking for approval of the schematic design for the new elementary school. If approved, we'll continue to work with the Moving Forward Foundation to continue fundraising efforts for this project. With that approval, then we move into the construction document phase. This is a little accelerated on this project, but we anticipate signing and sealing the documents in May of 23, which is just around the corner. We would then put the project out for bid, receive proposals in June. And then come back to the board for approval for July for construction to begin. Pretty accelerated schedule to say the least. And then we go into the construction phase. We don't exactly know when, but we anticipate a groundbreaking event to be determined here in the future. And then right now, with our partner with Juris working on this, they've been involved at every step of the way and been a key component to understanding the timelines and how we're going to deliver this project. So right now we're hearing 18 months for construction. So we anticipate July 23 to begin, and that would take us into January of 25 to complete. And then we do have a outlook for first day of school, but there's so many things that happen between now and then. And we understand that, you know, this is a, we want to make sure that this this building is a trauma open with trauma informed care in it. And even though we're showing a January 25 date, there are some things that still need to be developed in this as we get into maybe considered a soft opening for the school to understand how the facility will be used. Take advantage of all the opportunities of the design as we move through the project. So we'd also like to share with you a schematic design animation that our team has been working with. And before that, I just I have a couple of team members here that also like to recognize we have Marty Massey is our Vice President of Construction Services here. And then we have Chris Huckabee as well that's joining us this evening for this. So this is about a three, three and a half minute video. Basically flies around the building and then you enter through, you fly through the building and then go through the the spaces. The courtyard, the library, the cafeteria, and then the gymnasium. Let's go ahead and say that for you.